Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Yes, just wanted to say this meeting is being recorded. This recording does not constitute the official record of this meeting. Okay, so. Your visions to the agenda?
No.
Public comment on non-agenda items. Saying none, move on to approval for the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes from April 15.
Second.
Any discussion, anything? Good, okay. Call for a vote on favor. Five opposed, best unanimously. Recognizations and commendations.
Yeah, I mean, I'll update this again at the end of August or in our August meeting. But, I mean, there's a lot of people to recognize at this particular point in the year. And certainly faculty, staff, everybody in the school community. We're about to finish another year, and it seems to go very quickly. But particularly today, I wanted to talk a little bit and recognize our partners in funding in the district. Not just in fiscal year '24, but moving forward into fiscal year '25, the commitments that we already have. I mean, in fiscal year '24, you know, YCCF gave $100,000. The PTO, $125,000, I would receive from the PTO in fiscal year '24. And that's without the skiing piece of that. The Spanish Peaks Community Foundation last year was, you know, around $20,000. And then moving forward, you know, as everyone knows, since August, we've been talking about our budget deficit. And we've already received some really good news, you know, from the community and the foundation. Spanish Peaks has awarded us $120,000 for the upcoming year. Big Sky Resort area tax district just approved last week $50,000 for our school district. For one particular project, I'll talk about another allocation for them later. You know, Moonlight Basin's in for $13,250 to support our new program. And the YCCF grants are still outstanding, but I imagine that's going to come in and really help ally those budget deficits as well. So I thought it was important to talk about those funding partners in the past and moving forward.
Yeah, definitely agree. Excellent. Okay, move on to your report.
I handed it out, so I'll just kind of hit the high points. Our anticipated enrollment rate in district-wide is 379, that's minus 15 from where we were in February. Corky, are we out of three-year averaging now? That was something I meant to ask you on the call earlier.
No, we will have a little bit of benefit next year. I think there was 400 and some change about two years ago, so that will help us for fiscal year '26. But after that, yes, we'll run it downward to track three.
Okay, so, you know, we can plus that probably around seven-ish that we'll see kind of roll in between now and the end of summer. And as we get all of the enrollment paperwork back. But it was pretty up to date today when we looked at it. The housing project, so again, Big Sky Resort tax approved $375,000 last week for this project. It's with our engineers. I'm anticipating a June meeting for our first meeting in front of the commissioners for the building or lease or rent permit. And once that, once we get that in our hands, things should be able to move relatively quickly with that. We're still probably going to be looking at a 12, 10 to 12-month project, which is what we anticipated anyway. And then, you know, we're just, hopefully, I'm hopeful that this summer will just kind of be normal maintenance and taking care of things around the school. Both gyms are getting redone, the floor is getting redone, deep cleaning. And we'll be looking for a high school student, hopefully, to hire for summer work.
Can you remind us again where that new housing project we have set up?
Yeah, so it was the project that the students presented.
Right.
So where the tennis courts currently sit. And then that, the bond, you know, we still have bond reserves that, you know, addressed athletic facilities. We can rebuild the tennis court.
Great. And will that 375 cover the student project as submitted?
No, if you remember, we, so we have 375. I've got a 375 commitment from philanthropy. And then we were going to take just a fourth investment.
Oh, that's right. And what will go forward after we get?
Yeah, I mean, all, there's still a lot more decisions to make at this level.
And then just one quick question, the numbers, it was 33 graduating, 18 coming in, something like that. So we're graduating.
What did we graduate in?
I thought 36, but it's more, I think it's 36 and 18.
Yeah, so that's a big.
Big shift between high school and middle school.
It's 33 is the right number, bringing in 18. That's basically the net 15, which is exactly what we're down from our spring count.
Thanks, okay, thanks, Dustin. Marlo?
Great, thank you. We have so much happening right now in Willam High School. I think I've captured it all, but I have faculty here, but I've forgotten. Academics, the seniors are wrapping up their finals and their IB exams this week and doing a final check out. So it's kind of a nice moment for them. The pressure is starting to be released. We begin our high school finals for nine to 11 next week on Friday. The mass testing is finally done in the middle school. And we'll send out the results via parent form last week this fall. We really commend our kids for sticking through that, and it's a lot of testing for them. We had our high school art show last Thursday, and it was really an incredible display of work. I believe most of it's still left, so if you get a chance to walk through the wand pack, it was really lovely. Congratulations to Ms. Riley and to our high school art students. And then acapella group joined and performed as we looked at the artworks, so it was really special.
That's great.
We had two eighth graders who placed first and second in the rural school declamation contest. Charlotte, we're in an entire middle step, so a great job on that. And thanks to Ms. Jakes for organizing. Mr. Harder and Mr. Skoulis took the grade seven students to the Flying D Ranch for the environmental summit last month. And the report for Mr. Skoulis was the students represented the school exceptionally well and gave lots of new insights on how to protect our environment. And then we have a lot continuing in our science department. And since Dr. Isley's here, I thought I would let her talk about your trip tomorrow, phages and Nasa.
Okay, yeah, there's a lot going on this week. So last week, I had Robin Hain. He is a part of the phages program at Montana Tech. He came last year, and so it's headed by this one, Dr. Marissa Padula at Montana Tech. And they're basically prospecting for viruses, bacteriophages, that could be used as medicine against antibacterial resistant organisms. We did not, the kids keep asking me, we have not found any phages yet, unfortunately. I think it's too cold. But I got some more training from him about maybe how I could do this independently. The grant money that this has been funded through this is the 10th year is drying up. So I don't know if that'll get renewed, but he and I had more time to spend together about how I could try to operate independently of the program. Let's see, what's going on this week?
Do you have the bison trip tomorrow?
We have, we're going to, taking the ninth grade with Mr. Popola to Paradise Valley to see this story archaeological site. So there's this huge bison complex. And so Scott Carpenter was here on Monday. He's an archaeologist whose children actually went to OFER way back when. And so he's studying these drivelines over in the Paradise Valley. There's close to like 400 of them. So that'll be a cool experience for the kids. And then the NASA virtual showcase, those boys are trying to wrap everything up. That's on Thursday. And so they're going to present their project. We'll have our final checkout meeting, and then we'll ship their box back to NASA. And then I don't know when that hot air balloon is going up sometime later this summer. Yeah, so it's a busy week.
It is a busy week.
Yeah.
Okay, and then for student life, we had our Great Gatsby prom a week and a half ago. A great success, and we're grateful to Mr. Harder for being an awesome DJ and for moonlight support. It was really, it's a beautiful venue. OMS had their spring dance on Friday. It was Barbie themed, and there is a cutout Barbie box that you can take a portrait in if you're walking around in the middle school. And it was a really fun way to celebrate their hard work and thanks to Dr. Brooke and the OMS Student Council. And then we are in the midst of LPHS student elections. And today, the students gave their speeches during flex. And I'll say, I was really impressed with their courage. It takes a lot of courage to run for student council when you're in high school. And they were supportive of each other, so I was really excited. It's a good exercise in democracy. And then on Saturday, NHS under Dr. Isley's.
Sunday.
Sunday.
Sunday, Harper Sierra on Sunday, that's way down to 18.
On Sunday, Harper Sierra on Sunday, thank you.
Yeah.
And then we are gearing up for the following week for graduation. Graduation portraits are done. The yard signs you should see around town shortly, if not already. And then we'll finish the week off, the last week with OMS Field Day and our grade eight promotion ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it?
Mine's a little shorter.
Thanks, Marlo. Bridget?
We have our fifth grade students, they're working on their exhibition projects right now, which is the culmination of their experience in P W P. They get to do their own unit of inquiry and research and present something that they're passionate about. Those presentations will be the second to the last Thursday of school. So if you're around that day, they'll be in the gym. And the same thing, it's kind of a big deal to have that many people all day long, parents and students coming through as an audience. So they're excited about that. Fourth grade just got back last Friday from the final expedition Yellowstone. In fourth grade, moving to eighth grade is an experience going forward. But the kids had a lot of excitement and worries going into the week, and then a lot of tears Thursday night because they were believing they had bonded and had so much fun. So that was a really great way to kind of wrap up their experience in fourth grade. I'm working on some summer programming to take advantage of House Bill 253. There's funds available for a summer jumpstart program. The goal of that is to ensure all students are reading on grade level by grade three. So we're going to service probably 27 students in our building from rising 4K kids to those rising second graders moving to third grade. Maggie Angel and Christine Toy have agreed to be the teachers for that program. And we have some high school students that are going to come in to help support. So that'll be a really great way for us to carry some learning over the summer and try to prevent some of that summer learning loss that happens. Additionally, for our 4K program in the fall, we've completed all the testing. That same House Bill required, had a new testing requirement that went along with it. So we've tested all the students that are coming into that. I think we have 19 kiddos rostered for that program. We have 20 seats, so that was great. We were able to accept everyone into the program. They all met the requirements for testing. And then this week, we wrap up our end of year testing, map testing, mass testing, acadians testing. All of it will be done by Friday. And I think the students and staff will be excited to have that finished. And then it's on to fun end of year things like move up day. Every kid in the building visits the next grade level to kind of learn what they have to be excited about. We have Field Day, which the fifth graders organized for the whole school. So it's their final piece of taking on leadership for our building. And then kindergarten and graduation that last week, so. We're 11 days, I think, till the end, which seems impossible.
Yeah, that's quick.
Yeah.
Any questions? Thanks, Bridget. Mr. Zilman?
Okay. Andrew?
Zach?
I'm just going to share a couple of items that's out of our busy schedule. I want to highlight a couple of learning experiences that our students in 11th and 12th grade have been participating in as we come to the end of the school year. The first one I wanted to bring up was the collaborative sciences project that all 11th grade students participated as part of their IB science courses. Oops, I jumped ahead. The first one I'm going to talk about is going to be the collaborative science projects. So this was, this happened earlier this month. On May 6th and May 7th, students in their IB science classes, biology, physics, and the design technology classes, they actually took those two days to work collaboratively on an interdisciplinary project in which they chose a research topic that required them to pull in at least two of those sciences to work together. And the focus of the theme was on sustainability and recreation, allowing them to really just explore things in the community in areas of interest. I was just talking to Dr. Isley about this, and if she, would you be willing to share a little bit?
Sure. Yeah. I'm glad, yeah, Dr. Brooke took some pictures of the kids presenting. So this is the first time we had them actually present in the wand pack and with freshmen and sophomores. And I think that was a really good experience for those in the audience and those on stage to really take it much more seriously. And I have to thank Dr. Mitchum for rallying in the wand pack the day of, like a couple hours ahead of time to practice. And Jared helped with tech, and so like everybody kind of pitched in. Yeah, they did some interesting things. I mean, there was definitely an environmental science bend to it. But there was one, one project I thought was really neat. The students looked at pollutants in terms of how far away from the road they sampled plants. And then they ground them up. And then I just had these water quality test strips that measured like 14 different things. But for some of the nutrients, there was like a clear gradient. They were much, the concentrations of some things were much higher near the road than further away, which I thought was kind of cool. I was like, I don't know if this is going to work, but this is a good idea. So, yeah, and it was good for them to work with kids they're not working with as much because they're not necessarily in science class the other. It was, it was fun. They made it work. They lit, some of them lit things on fire and.
For science.
Not on property. They went to their, somebody's house in a fire pit and did it in a controlled way. But, yeah, they had fun with it. It was a good, I think, the presentation part probably, I think, was the best practice for them. In terms of standing up there and having to coordinate with each other and who's going to say what when. And, yeah, so it was like a good team effort from a staff perspective, too. Yeah.
Thanks, Dr. Isley, for your input on that. And we also have Mr. Gula for physics, and Mr. Blessing were all part of that project to making that happen. It was a really nice opportunity. I want to go back a month to April, so just want to set up. This was, this happened during April, but we didn't get a chance to record on this during April Board Report. On our 12th grade, Mrs. Riley also put on a 12th grade art exhibition just for our senior IB art students. And this was a really cool event that we, you know, we have returned to, which is great with the seniors taking art. We had two venues this year, which was exciting. We had the wand pack gallery where students showcased their work. And it was, the exhibition itself was put on in conjunction with musical. But we also had Kealan set up his at the Galton River Gallery. And the students did a little field trip out there to, you know, celebrate his work and his exhibition. So the photo with Ms. Riley and her students there. But that's, that's just another event that we've had going on with the IB curriculum. You know, these students are busy engaging with things, whether they're presentations or exhibitions. And the goal of this was, I just wanted to capture some of these moments. You know, they can go by quickly when I'm rambling them off in a report. I was hoping to slow down a little bit for a minute and just celebrate some of the work for these students. And then finally, last part, we are in the final week of the May 2024 IB exam session. For those who don't share my excitement about that. Since there are a couple of exams and experience that.
I meant to make one.
I just want to commend these students on their work. We, we had 17 students participating from our senior class in the exams this year. The student, this is our sixth year running them at the school. And it's a really great opportunity for our students that can register as diploma candidates and, you know, where they're being tested throughout all their subjects. And they're, you know, eligible, qualified for their IB diploma. Or they, you know, we've had students also register for just one or two IB exams, and they get a chance to just sit for that exam and potentially earn some transfer credit for college. But I really want to celebrate the hard work of folks as their diploma cohort before I got a photo of them right before they had an end of their English exams on their way up. And so they, all their smiling faces. But I just, the exam results, you know, the importance of this program really is this gives us an opportunity to really hold a high standard for our academics in the district. And it gives us direction on where we're going with all our classes right through the end of senior year. And these students are going right across the finish line with these. The exam results for our students who sit are recognized by universities across the country and wells around the world. So it gives them a lot of opportunities in their post-secondary, you know, adventures. And then lastly, our school results are released in July 6th, so we'll know about how these students have done. They've come out of these exams, you know, expressing confidence in several subject areas, which is a testament to the preparation, you know, from our faculty and staff here. And we'll have some more insights on global data typically around late August or early September. And we can see how the cohorts across the globe did. So it's an exciting time for these students, and I just want to celebrate, you know, all the hard work that they've put in, as well as the teachers and community for supporting them. So, thank you. Does my report, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Tim, and thanks to everybody. I mean, I know you guys worked so hard for this and being there with the child, seeing it go through. It's ups and downs, and you guys have done fantastic, so thank you all. Activities?
I can give John's, it was really, it's really brief. Springs courts are finishing up. He's actually up in Shelby right now with the golf tournament, the state tournament. They won the divisional tournament, the girls golf team did. And we had an individual winner. And then 11th place, 22nd place, and something else. But we won the divisional tournament. I might be happy about strokes, though, but we did have, we did, we won it. We had an individual champion.
About like 40 strokes, right?
Yeah, they won by something.
Many longer than that.
Yeah, so it was a big deal.
Because Kate did really well.
Kate did really, really well, Kate LeBris. So they're up in Shelby right now competing in the state, also in the state tournament. And then John wanted me to update. We did have a committee meeting, and Seth was on that, is on that committee, too, regarding increased participation in Middle Peak High School sports. And so we hope to have a policy in front of you with Athletic Handbook in June and July at the latest.
Corky?
Well, so we're working on wrapping up fiscal year '25. Obviously, you can see in the board packet that the general fund budgets, as well as some others, are negative. So we'll start adjusting buckets of money and taking advantage of House Bill 408 to try to balance the budget. We're looking at only $1,500,000 that we'll use of House Bill 408 between now and end of June in order to balance all of our fiscal '25 buckets. At the same time, obviously, we're focused on fiscal year '26. Don't have that budget set until our August board meeting. However, we'll have to use our general fund reserves starting July 1. So that's when we talked about the general fund reserves. We cannot use that, we cannot, we can't budget that money, but we can use it to help us put a cash flow basis in September and October timeframe. Besides that, we do not have a budget meeting between now. I'll be there in about a week and a half, and we will be going through the budget in detail to try to see how we can get through the next fiscal year.
Great, any questions? Thanks, Corky.
I did want to touch one base. One other thing is that we definitely want to do that, did include our 4K program. So if we take out our 4K program, we're looking at about 361 students. That's, that's similar to fiscal year '17. So the past seven years, we're basically level K through 12. But we're talking about our budgets. It hasn't gone.
Is it okay if I ask a question about budget?
I think so.
If there's a time at the end?
I mean, go ahead.
Okay, so I guess my question is, so help me understand. So we're really not going to understand where we are from a budget perspective until August? Is that what?
No, that's when the board will adopt the official budget. We have a really good idea where we're at right now, not a really good, we have almost a 99% idea where we're at right now.
Okay, so pretty quickly, you will know what it's looking like for next year.
We know.
And then we will also, you'll also be able to communicate if there's a shortfall, where the shortfall is going to impact curriculum or activities or what. So that as parents, like, we know, okay, so, you know, this may not, we may not have this next year, so I need to fill a gap. You know, you understand what I'm saying from a parent's perspective? What I'm trying to understand is, when am I going to know what I need to supplement for for next year, given the fact that the budgets are so difficult?
Well, I mean, all that planning, at least from a personnel perspective, which is 90% of our budget, has been done already.
Okay.
Because, I mean, and I don't want to get too far into the weeds on this, but, you know, right around August is when the board's budget meeting is, and that's when we'll talk, you know, publicly about everything. I'll add, you're certainly welcome to make an appointment with any of us to discuss in depth any questions you have along those lines, Kim, instead of going into it here.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, I could, we could go on, the budget committee, Corky, we could go on for three hours.
Okay.
Have I answered your question?
Yeah, I guess my, my concern is, you know, you know, in the community in general, there's pushes across the board for contributions for many different things in Big Sky. And my, my question is, is there a way for us to get out in front of that right now so that as, as community members, as parents, that we can, when we're making a decision whether to support a new baseball field for BSCO or if we need to support for substitute teachers or a new bus for the whatever? I know that, community knows that. Like, how can we help now instead of people making decisions coming up for contributions in different things in the community and not knowing that there's a real need at the school for us to support you in some way?
We definitely need money, give it to us.
Yeah. I get it, I read about all of Montana. So I think in general, the community is kind of aware, like, ooh, there's something going on. What they're not aware of, and I'm speaking in general terms, like, they're not aware of where, like, how, how badly we need the money at the school.
Yeah, and that's one of the big pushes. We've been trying to educate folks through the school and through the budget committee on some of the specifics, but the short answer is, as you heard Corky say, we're essentially 2017 numbers and double the budget, so, I mean.
I get it.
Yeah. But I'm happy to go down with you.
Maybe that can lead us right into kind of the budget committee.
Budgets committee.
Yeah, and then we can talk about the last meeting that we had, what we're shooting for from a deficit perspective to bring to the board in August.
Yeah, I just have to pull my notes.
Yeah, so we met, I'll give a preamble while you're getting your notes. We met, I think, just before spring break. So this year, Corky has mentioned, we, we were going to spend about $900,000 of House Bill 408, which is just, the short story is, it's tax credit dollars that we can take. People can prepay their Montana taxes, up to $200,000 per person. And the school district in the past could take a lot of money. This year, we were limited to $575,000. So over three years, we raised $1.8 million in those three years in tax credit dollars. So at the beginning of this year, we were looking, so back in August, we were looking at significant deficit. Albert Daniel were on that board at that time that adopted that budget. And we adopted a budget that was, I think, showed about $800,000, didn't it, Corky, of House Bill 408 dollars?
Okay.
So now, right, this is a legislative action, so we don't know what's going to happen every two years with the House Bill 408 dollars. Our current balance is, Corky?
Million?
Million. So we have been shooting for a 10% of our general fund, which is about 3.9, about 3.10%, of 3.9 million to support the general fund in fiscal year '25. So, right, we're cutting that in half. And then you'll hear from the budget committee report, right now, we're going to be showing a deficit of $160,000. That's all in, all personnel, everything, all programming in for fiscal year '25. And you guys jump in at any particular point, and I'm not just addressing this to you. This is for everybody who's education. With that, with that budget and that $160,000 deficit. With that, with that budget and that $160,000 deficit, that's also inclusive of with House Bill 408 and other community supports, about $650,000. So in all reality, we could be operating at a $650,000 debt, we could be looking at a $650,000 deficit without donor dollars and without community supports.
So the House bill and the extra support has basically allowed for us to, we continue to expand extracurricular programming across the board. But at the end of the day, from the state perspective, we get a 3% increase a year for inflation. We've had federal dollars taken away because of the ESAR and COVID funds out of the last. And now we're back to, you know, 2017 student numbers. So we're getting less from the general fund to actually be doing more of an extracurricular.
Well, and we do get funded for 4K, so we're really closer to 2019 numbers.
So I mean, from a parent's perspective, and I'm a parent too in the school, programs aren't getting cut, extracurriculars are not getting cut, nor are educational opportunities. There are some teachers that are not being renewed and we're going to talk about that later in the program, not program, in the meeting here. But there are other teachers that are slotting into backfill. This year, we had some extra periods so teachers could get a little catch your breath, so to speak. And that is shifting now. So some teachers are working a little more than they did this year, which isn't more than they had worked in the past. We're kind of, we were overstaffed and underfunded, let's say, last year. Even from a teacher perspective, and I can say that having talked to some of the teachers. Next year, we're going to be going back to kind of where we were in terms of staffing versus student ratio, in terms of staffing hours per day that they're working. And I know that teachers work a lot more than just what they do in this building. I'm not at all suggesting they don't, but we're moving back to kind of what we have been in the past. So from a parent's point of view, your child or children aren't going to be missing out on opportunities on the ball field or in the classroom or for extracurriculars. But as Dustin and Karen and everybody else has pointed out, without philanthropy dollars, we don't have what we've got going now. And the easy way to look at it is we get the same amount of dollars per kid, so to speak, as do Butte and Belgrade and Ronian and Miles City and everywhere else. And if you go look at facilities in those places, we are a step above. And we're really trying to run a private school on public dollars, which, you know, if anybody's ever run a business or run a household, it doesn't work. And that's all we have to keep asking for dollars. And if we want the nice things that we have, as I tell my children, then we have to work hard and pay for them. And so when we talk about the STEAM Center, which is wonderful and gives our kids an opportunity not just to get a really strong academic underpinning, but, and this isn't the right word, but kind of a more hands-on or blue collar approach. And it's not blue collar anymore. It's all technology driving these hands-on jobs. We're giving kids different opportunities to go out in the world and do different things. Rather than just say, okay, you have to go through and here's what it looks like and you have to be like every other kid. Our kids now have an opportunity to go out and hit the world with real job skills that they can turn into a career and make a living on in this town and other places in the country. But to have all those things, to be able to do EY and be able to travel all over and, you know, do all the programs that our kids get to do, including the resort skiing and one mountain ranch skiing, that comes through philanthropy, both from the resort and SP and YC and all the other companies, and from individual donors through House Bill 408 or other individual philanthropic efforts. So to the extent we need to do a better job educating folks, then you're right, we do need to do a better job. Because I didn't know a lot of this till I got on the board and I've been here for 25 years. You know, I used to work in the school, got two kids that have been in the school for, I don't know, what, 11 years now. And some of these things I didn't know until last year when I joined the board. So that's a failure of us not, of parents. But the short answer is, if you're considering giving money to somebody else or us, we need it. We can put it to use. I mean, that's the real part of the matter. We just need to help folks understand the specifics of their money's going to, so they don't just think we're asking for money for public school, which should be funded. But we are, we're just not funded the way that most of us want to raise our kids here.
And I think, I mean, Dr. Isley's talked a lot, right? You're now on the finance board for OPI.
Oh, I'm just volunteering. No, I'm not.
And all the SBA, I know Bosman Schools has, they have an amendment that will be voted on by MTSBA in June to change the funding model at the state, which has not been done since like the 80s, I think. It's a little bit of a political lightning rod. I don't know if it gets passed or doesn't get passed and then it'll get pushed through to the next legislative session. I mean, there's a lot we can do locally and there's a lot that can be done outside of Big Sky as well from a funding perspective.
Could I add something to that? I mean, I think like this legislative session coming up in January is going to be really important. And Dustin and I talked about this last week, like, what we're facing is a national trend. Declining enrollment, increased inflation and the loss of these ESAR funds. But our state legislature has not really stepped up to address this like gap in funding. And so I think paying attention and advocating, you know, like when we know what kind of bills are in play, like advocating our representatives to like vote for particular things. I'm definitely going to be paying attention to those things. I'm sure Dustin's going to be paying attention to those things. I'm sure the trustees are going to be paying attention to those things. But I mean, I would say that's like another way to change the funding model because the school board and the district are limited in a lot of ways by the rules set by the legislature about what they can spend and how much they can spend.
And the amount that we get in.
Right.
Because we have people saying, well, shoot, y'all get all this money and you keep asking us for more. Where does it stop? And like, go advocate to the legislature because they're the ones saying it should be equal for us, even though our cost of living here is significantly higher than Belgrade. Even though Belgrade's cost of living is significantly higher than Miles City. You know, my understanding of the law is, is that it kind of evens out the pool so that we don't have a nicer school than anybody else, but we certainly do. And we work harder for that. But right now, we're having, we as parents and community members are having to pay for that individually versus from a state funding perspective.
Okay, so two things. I just want to make sure I understand this correctly because I'm not a finance person. So we're running a $650,000 deficit for next year. Is that correct?
It would actually be higher without the use of our House Bill funds.
With injection of non-state dollars, no, we'll be running at $160,000. That's what we're targeting. Without an injection of private dollars, we would be more around the 850 mark.
And you're, you're counting the private dollars that have already come in. Is that correct?
All about $100,000 that have already, we've been, yes, we've been, the short answer is yes.
So for instance, we have HB 408 money and the coffers. We have, I think Corky said a million dollars that we're banking against and we're trying not to use all that on one go. But I think the rest has been committed, right?
And we know that all but $100,000 is what my target is for another local foundation, but the foundation dollars have already been allocated. Or, yeah, I guess allocated would be the right word. And then so with House Bill 408, right, at this current burn rate, we have a two-year runway, fiscal year '25 and '26.
Okay. Yeah, I just would be, I would be interested in how, and how you manage the communication on this to the community. Because
Not well.
I mean, well, no, I mean, just like moving forward, like, how you manage the story? Because coming, coming here, I'm thinking, I'm reading everything I'm thinking, all right, well, I'm ready for the cuts. Where are the cuts coming? Where do we need, you know, whatever, volunteers, money, whatever it is. But what I'm hearing is that we're good. There's no cuts in the teachers, there's no cuts in the programs. You're going to, your child will have the same experience that they did last year. And so
So I mean, I would just stop you there and Matt, we should probably carry on. I think that is what your child is going to notice and what we're all going to notice is, right, we really committed to, and we've been talking about this since August in open meetings in this room, is what we committed to at that time was no programmatic cuts. So you might notice a couple more kids in class. That's going to be something that you notice. But you're not going to notice, hey, we're throwing, we're throwing programming out the window. We're no longer going to pursue the PYP. We're no longer going to pursue this. We're no longer going to try to do new and innovative programs in our STEAM facility. Those programmatic things we're keeping. So the biggest, the biggest thing people are going to feel next year is a few more kids in class. And we still, in my opinion, have relatively small classes compared to a lot of schools in the state of Montana and certainly, you know, schools within our region. But we will no longer have a 1 to 10 ratio in kindergarten.
Okay.
So that's what, you know, we committed to that clear a long time ago.
Yeah, Dustin, Dustin, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yep, so jumping here, I think the narrative on the street is that teachers are concerned that teachers are going to get cut and programs are going to get cut. And that's just not the reality of what's happening right now. We're going to make it work and we're, we're going to make the budget work and everybody needs to rest assured that this is going to work as a program and as a school. And I've been hearing that a lot lately as a narrative is that, you know, teachers are not going to get funded and programs are not going to get funded, but that's just not the reality. We're going to make this whole thing work. So everybody's to rest assured and trust the system.
Yeah, and I would go back to just kind of reiterate something that Matt said earlier. You know, we tried really, really hard for two years to get, you know, this, this teaching load, so to speak, down one. But it just happened at a time when enrollment also fell down, right? So, you know, when you look at a timetable for certified staff, when you look at the timetable for certified staff and you look at the staff as an aggregate, for every teacher you drop a course, a teaching course, every five teachers that adds an FTE. And really
Full-time.
FTEs is a whole other.
Oh, yeah, full-time, sorry. And that's a full-time equivalent. So really, we're just going back to a staffing pattern that's more similar to what it was in '21, '22, even '22, '23, to be honest. And, and I mean, somebody, Jeremy or Kate, can correct me. We have been flowed between five and six over the last 10 years. There's probably been more where people have taught six out of seven, but there's been three or four where it was four out of, five out of seven. And it just became, you know, again, when your enrollment's growing, your budget's growing, everybody's, you know, and you're having big parties on, you know, the 5th of May. But, you know, when enrollment takes a dive like it took, that we really weren't anticipating. It's where you end up, where you end up here. But I would add, Kim, just, I'm happy to reach out to me, I mean, the board could put together a communications committee. And certainly I would welcome your
So I can, I can speak for Matt and Dustin wholeheartedly saying our mission is to not cut teachers and not cut programming. That's our first and foremost mission in this school board, is to make sure that teachers are not cut and programs are not cut. So rest assured that that's what our top priority is.
Really good rations. Thank you for asking.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to
Was that the budget committee?
No, I mean, that's Okay. Move on to discussion and action. Take a motion on the first.
I make a motion to approve the resolution to allow Gallatin County to conduct the SSD election.
So that's in the packet, really, this is just, as we always do, to allow Gallatin County to run the elections instead of running it ourselves.
Great. Any questions, anybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the survey about how dates requested by the law.
Second.
That was in the packet too. John's, we've got a full summer of shows and meets all of our policy criteria.
Really good shows that we haven't, we haven't done before, it looks like.
Yeah, lots of stuff we haven't done before, yeah.
Hey, Trumami, Dustin, we have to do it season by season, right? We're not able to do it like it
No, season by season. It's season by season and the policy's really clear about, you know, you can do season by season or event by event. It's easier to do this season, but we can just save for all the time. And then, you know, we have to have the licensed caterer do it.
Sure. And he's always good about checking calendars and making sure there's no school events, okay? Things like that, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the reading of the new economics book, Understanding Economics for Adoption.
Second.
So this will be the first reading. We'll go, that's it right there, Matt has it. It will go over this, we'll reread it again in June for full approval. So the state has a new graduation requirement where students have to have a course in personal finance. We, for the first year, or this is the second year, so for the first, when they first rolled this out, we just had to have a course that would fit that bill. We have ID business that fits, that ticks that box for the graduating. But now it's switching to students have to have this on their transcript to graduate. So it's going to go into the 10th grade course a semester and there's a really good unit in there on, on personal finance. And so this comes recommended by the teacher and by the, the high school principal.
I mean, I think that's fantastic. The more personal finance they can learn, the better. Okay, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the Oprah Mountree School handbook as presented.
Second.
So I don't know if you had time to read through it. I'll let Brittany discuss any changes that I don't hit, but the baby is to increase the lunch prices for next year. Corky and I had a conversation with the lunch program director, Lindsay, and landed on these prices. I mean, food prices are up. What are we up, Corky, 10% over the last year?
Yeah, we're down about 20-plus percent in food and meal sales and we're up almost 30% in the cost of food. So this is, goes back to
It's a small increase. If you run, we have an increase of lunch prices in two years. It's still reasonable.
You say there was a downtick in people taking
Yeah, so downtick in feeding, I mean, fewer kids, fewer meals. Right, if you're down 10, if that kid eats every day, that's that's a lot, 1,800 meals.
But for the kids that we have still here, and they're never staying the same.
I would say it's really close percentage-wise. It's the same percentage, just people are eating, it's just a smaller group.
Group, yeah.
Okay.
We've added teachers. Right?
What's that?
We've added some teachers.
But they, for free.
Taking away piece of revenue also, that is, yeah.
Yeah, so that was a piece of revenue that adds to the
Sure. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the strategic planning process for 2024 to 2025.
Yeah, I wanted to kind of talk through this with you guys. Sorry. We've had the same consultant over the last, you know, nine years. And the last time we had a really significant update to this plan was 2021. And given a lot of what our current context is with enrollment, housing, recruitment, budgets, I think it could be a good time to come back in for a really, really comprehensive process with this particular person. I was able to secure a really big donation eight years ago, nine years ago even, for strategic planning that still has quite a bit of money left that lives in Fobzie, which I think I can easily get my hands on. And I think it would be beneficial for the district moving forward to have the same guy who's known us for nine years. Yeah, come back. And I mean, when he did the first process, looked a lot different than the last few did. There were more kind of tune-ups. The first one, we had 850 responses to a qualitative survey that took narrative answers. He was here on the ground for three days, met with a lot of different groups.
Community-wide.
Community-wide. And they came back after all, you know, interpreted all they did. They came back and worked with a group of about 14 to come up with that particular plan at that time. I don't think this stuff's ever a bad idea, but I think now it could be particularly key timing for the district and, you know, really all it's going to cost us as a school district is, you know, getting teachers the professional days off to participate.
Right. And so this would be just getting this process started.
I'd have to talk to him and everything and then I would even, if any of the trustees had any questions, I can bring him into the next meeting. And then get a quote from him and then try to get the funding from, from that bucket. I mean, it's dedicated to street CCB planning, so I can't imagine that there'd be a collision.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll keep you updated.
Okay, great.
Policy is, I'll make a motion to approve policies 2132, 3110, 3121, 5325, 8110, 8132, and 8501. fifty-three twenty-five, eighty-one ten, eighty-one thirty-two, and eighty-five oh two as presented. Lot of policies.
Second.
So these are required changes. I mean, this is the first and only reading. I mean, I don't know if the policy committee wants to chime in about what great reading these particular policies were.
If you, if you can't sleep.
I mean, they're all things that, um, if you if you look in the board, in the whole packet, anything underlined is new language. It it's reflective of laws and things that we have to do.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of policy twenty-one sixty-two P two as presented.
Second.
So this is a recommend- a recommended change or suggested change from MTSBA has exclusively to do with the read about the five oh four Re-creation Act. And as we read in the um committee meeting, good changes, so procedurally for us.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
On to forms. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of forms as presented related to adult education. Looking for some care, school changes.
Yeah.
Let's get one of these.
Second.
Yeah, so these are recommended forms, and we we looked them over pretty closely. Uh, we do have a lot going on here for, you know, people who aren't connected to the school. And when MTSBA recommends these things, it's exclusively around litigation or liability avoidance. So it's a great idea. We take these. So just as a reminder, we'll, we have to read these again because they're not required.
Yeah, and it is good. Like you said, it covers us for liability standpoint, which there's some people coming through, might as well. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously.
Hey, so Matt, can I jump in here real quick? Eight one one zero was not part of that first motion. I don't know if that was done purposeful or not.
No, no.
No.
Okay, so just.
That is there, yeah.
Transparent, that was not part of the first motion, so we just need to clean that up.
I'll make a motion to approve eight one one zero as presented.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously. There were a lot. Thanks, Ed. Uh, can I move on to number seven?
Make a motion to approve the certification of the election results as presented.
Second.
I mean, there's not a lot more to say. The numbers are there.
Everybody's happy with those numbers, yeah.
Any machine?
The it it's now every single, like, election for money, win or lose, it's almost that exact same percentage.
Yeah. Yeah.
But thank you to the big spec orders for passing. I'm one of only three asks for money that passed in the county.
Yeah, there were a lot across the state that were not passed, so, yeah, we really appreciate. Everybody's voted on that. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? As unanimously. Right, so number eight, these are long ones.
Eight A.
Eight A, please.
Eight A. I'll make a motion, let's see. To non-renew without cause the employment of Karen Schreiber, a non-tenure teacher in accordance with section twenty dash four dash two oh six of the Montana Code annotated.
Second.
So we need to ask, I'm sorry, for discussion.
If there's any, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, is there any further discussion from anyone? On that? And then we call to vote.
Correct.
Yep. Okay. Uh, all those in favor? Are we saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll move to non-renew without cause the employment of Tina Albers, a non-tenure teacher in accordance with section twenty dash four dash two oh six, Montana Code annotated.
Second.
Uh, same, any discussion from? Yes? Seeing none, vote. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'll move to non-renew without cause the employment of Anna Christina Wimmer, a non-tenure teacher in accordance with section twenty dash four dash two oh six, Montana Code annotated.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously.
I'll move to non-renew without cause the employment of Mary Elman, a non-tenure teacher in accordance with section twenty dash four dash two oh six, Montana Code annotated.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll move to non-renew without cause the employment of Susan Dan Hindon, a non-tenure teacher in accordance with section twenty dash four dash two oh six, Montana Code annotated.
Second.
Discussion? None. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-tenure certified staff as presented.
Second.
Discussion on that? Okay. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the classified staff hires as presented.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of Dr. Mitchell and Mrs. Shirley.
Second.
No discussion there? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously. All right, to the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously. Okay.
Mr. Nielsen.
Listen. All right, yeah. Move on to John Nielsen, County Superintendent of Schools, the swearing-in the new board members. Restructuring. Now it's your turn.
I did.
Turn over, yeah.
Think around my.
Get their ways.
First of all, thanks for having me. Appreciate it. Um, you just have to beat after me.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The United States and Montana Constitution.
The United States and Montana Constitution.
I will faithfully execute with fidelity.
I will faithfully execute with fidelity.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
And regard the best interests.
And regard the best interests.
Of the students and their education in all decisions.
Of the students and their education in all decisions.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Sign three times. Everything in triplicate. I can do that. So you are. That's you. Magic, it's thirty. That was that question. And maybe this Corky sign magically, or? Uh, I think we have a stamp for him. Libby, you have a stamp. Great.
Libby has a stamp.
It's it. All right.
Do I sign those now?
You can sign them now, yeah. Because you were just nearly elected to it.
That's fine.
Since you're still currently the board president.
Oh, okay.
It's so quiet. It's official.
This is official.
All right. And then we'll get you a copy. You stand.
Thanks.
Yeah, you bet. Then it'll get to you, you too.
I gotta go again?
All right. So you get to repeat after me, too.
Okay.
Uh, I do solemnly affirm.
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The United States and Montana Constitution.
The United States and Montana Constitution.
I will faithfully execute with fidelity.
I will faithfully execute with fidelity.
The duties of office.
The duties of office.
And regard the best interests.
And regard the best interests.
Of the students and their education in all decisions.
Of their students and the education in all.
Decisions.
Decisions.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. You get to sign twice. We do this later or we do this now?
We'll do it later.
Okay. You can send them to one.
Okay, sounds good.
Are you up for elections as well?
No, I've got a couple more years. Thankfully.
I know, it's pretty annoying.
Are we good, John?
Yeah, we did, I'm just giving you stuff. These are all new reorganized.
Okay.
So they're all hanging, and there's, so this will be yours.
Okay.
Let's go, these, the others are filed better.
Okay.
So one for the school, one for, back to me.
Okay, got it.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, how's it?
Thanks again, John. Appreciate it for coming out.
Anytime.
My friend, it's another meeting, Zach.
Appreciate it. Okay, same. Uh, okay, we'll move on to the restructuring of the board.
I will make a motion to nominate the chairman for board chair.
Second.
And uh, do I call for that vote?
But you don't want to.
Anyone else like to sway it, yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously. Thank you, guys. Move on to vice chair.
I'll make a motion to nominate Matt Dodd for vice chair.
I second that.
Okay, great. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? As unanimously. Uh, move on to clerk business manager.
Martin O'White, Corky Miller is district clerk, district business manager.
Second.
I sent him that.
Okay.
Sorry, Corky.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As unanimously. Okay. We'll move on to committee appointments.
Just trying to see. So the first one, personnel, this is, this is currently trustees Edgar and trustee Barker. And going into negotiations, you're actually, I should have put this in here, so I'm sorry, I didn't. Um, we have negotiations in in twenty twenty-five, so if nothing else, whoever's on it is fine. Um, but it should be the same people on both of those.
Yeah, you're good with that.
Just makes it easy.
Yeah, all good. Yeah, happy with that, so.
Yeah.
Good.
So same.
Keep that same, yeah. Uh, budget?
Two. That's currently trustees, Vice Chair Dodd and trustee Edgar.
And obviously, that's very active right now, so you guys are happy.
I'm not good at consulting.
Continue with that.
And I'll actually say that with, you know, it's probably a good time with all these committees just to recognize how active all of them are and how much worth meeting. Uh, and to be very clear just about capacity, so if you don't have it, don't sign up for it. Because there are a lot of meetings, there's a lot of emails, and it's important to show up for them.
Yeah, okay. Uh, next is scholarship, and that was one Lauren was on and also Matt Dodd. So we have a space there. And that's once a season, not two, frequent?
Not very frequent, I think it was, because there was some cross with um Fobzie.
Right. Okay.
I think it's that.
It happened. Seth, too. Well, let's get, Seth, are you okay with uh we appoint Danielle for that one for now? Just to get her, yeah, okay, everybody else is kind of busy, so. And Matt, do you want to stay on that one, or?
That's fine. Unless you, it's going to be somebody else.
No, I don't think so. Everybody's, yeah. So that'll be Danielle and Matt?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, because I'd like to see what those meetings.
Um, and then we had safety, uh, which has been myself, Cara and Seth. And that's, um, yeah, it's pretty quiet. I'm happy to stay put on that one.
Yeah.
Seth, you good with that, too? Okay.
Take it.
So I'll stay the same. Uh, policy is Matt Dodd and myself. Happy to stay with that.
Yes, we're happy with that.
Okay, keep that the same. And transportation. Pretty quiet. We don't have a lot, much going on with transportation right now, do we?
Just a lot.
Yeah, we just got everything.
It rarely is.
Yeah. We'll just keep that same. Can we have three on all these if we want?
If you want to.
Yeah, okay. I understand, no, like strategic plan. Seth, that's you and Cara, but could we add Danielle to that?
I mean, we can add you all to it if you would like.
Okay.
Um. Just, you know, when then whenever we have any kind of workshops or anything, we would set post it and all that, which would be fine.
Yeah.
I think, I think personally that we should all be on the strategic plan. Sorry.
No, I think it's, yeah, I think it's a good idea just because.
We'll put everybody on it.
Yeah, the people aren't there and very. Right, exactly, yeah. And then building facilities, we can next, that's currently Cara and Matt. Uh, I think we can add Danielle to that.
Do you want to?
Do you want to come on for that one?
I can off of that one.
Okay, so we'll pull Dodd, Matt Dodd off of that and add Danielle. And then next is housing, and that's uh Matt and myself. And that's gonna be ramping up here shortly, so I'm happy with that. Yep. And that's kind of goes hand in hand with facilities, too, Danielle, if you wanted to. Would you be interested in getting? And then we'll just keep negotiation the same. And then the bond, we're just kind of suspending for now, so don't really need that.
I'm just signing this one.
Oh, yeah, and then, are we gonna do a legislative?
We should.
We should.
I mean, it'll be starting January third.
Yeah, so that will come next January.
Um, I'd love to throw my hand on that one. With the MTSBA thing.
Sure, I think that'd be great.
Well written.
Yeah.
I can participate in that. I'll do that, okay.
Uh, circling back to communications, is that a, would that be a committee?
Can be.
It can be, yeah.
Should we do that?
We don't have one necessarily.
Yeah, we was talking about doing a new story.
Yeah, we're talking about, yeah, like a newsletter or something of that.
And we had the communications director here.
That's right, yes. Having to help. So do we need to pass that to be a new committee or anything, or can we just?
Put it on the agenda. Put it on the agenda.
Put it on.
Well, you can put it on for June, but certainly we can sign some people right now to assume to be.
Yeah, communications committee.
I would, I would be happy to do that.
Yeah, same. Three, three of us?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I have a question. Do I get a BSSD email?
Do you want one?
I do, because I can't imagine all this stuff appearing in my current email.
Come on, Drew.
Yeah, I can set it up for you. Libby will take care of that. Right, Libby?
Yes.
Actually, if anybody would like one, we can set those up.
Okay, I think I have one.
Probably there to be read. You're probably still in it.
Probably.
There's still a lot of history. A lot of junk.
Okay, next meeting, Seth.
Yeah, so actually, you skipped one. I mean, I just wanted to have a quick chat with the board now that we're newly seated, newly organized. We currently have, as the second day, second Tuesday of the month of 345, is there a better day time, or time at least that anybody can think of where would be easier, more convenient to get to? Is later in the evening better for people? Is this a good time?
I mean, I'm happy with these times.
Yeah, I think the only thing there, it's actually part of our policy about missing meetings. So if it's not working for people currently, then we should reconsider until we can try to have 100% attendance.
Five?
How's that?
I like it early.
Yeah. I mean, it's probably nicer for teachers and everyone right there in the day and.
Because we can write down the next 12 meetings, right? We can decide what they are.
Yeah, well, we just shoot for right in the second Tuesday. And then the, and then every, every agenda obviously has what the next meeting proposal is. But by a vote of the board during that meeting, we.
We can shift if we need to.
Change it if we need to. But, yeah, generally, like, again, second Tuesday of every month, 345, we set it at that and then work from there. Does that sound agreeable to everyone?
And there's always a Zoom option.
Yeah, there's a Zoom option every, every month.
As well.
And for, yeah, of course.
Yeah, yeah, for everybody.
Because I know some people, if they're at work, they're Zooming.
Attend.
Attend.
Yeah. Does that work for you, Seth?
Just, yeah, anytime it'd be dusted, Dustin alluded to this. If there's going to be two or three or more board members, those meetings will have to be agended, posted, minutes taken, a minute approved for every.
Right, go. For the committees, you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You'll be open to the public.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So the next meeting, June 11th, 345, that's the, we get out of school on a Friday.
It's two Tuesdays from that, so the second Tuesday in June. And we'll keep them at 345 in the summer, too.
Okay, great. Meeting adjourned.